Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to Ipswich Central redevelopment committee. This twenty-eighth day of November twenty twenty-three. Looking around the room, I see all councillors are in attendance. No apologies today. I'll start with the acknowledgement of country. Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land and waters we share. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging, as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of proud people. Do any committee members have any declarations of interest in matters on the agenda today? No. We have nil business outstanding, so I will move on to item one, which is confirmation of the minutes of the Ipswich Central redevelopment committee. Number eleven of twenty twenty-three dated the ninth of November. I will move that. Could I have a second, please? Thank you, Deputy Mayor Milligan. Anyone have any comments? Discussion around the minutes? No, we'll put the matter to the vote. All those in favour? Noting that's unanimous and carried. Moving along to item two, which is the first of the officers' reports, and that is the Ipswich Central revitalisation six monthly report. Can I call on the relevant council officer?
Hi.
Good afternoon. Dan Heenan, Economic Development Manager.
Thank you, Mr Heenan. I was also expecting Courtney, I think, so I'm hoping you might be able to speak to a couple of the issues. And one is within the report, number two, Alive.
Yep.
And developing the cultural heart, which was identified in our top of town and Ipswich Centre core place plans. Developing the cultural heart, it's a key project for Ipswich Central revitalisation. Are you able to give us an update, please, on the work that's been undertaken?
I'll do my very best. So I guess this feeds into the broader priority of that spine that exists from essentially Darcy Doyle Place down to South Street predominantly, maybe Roderick Street. And council is, I guess, looking to the public realm that exists between our cultural assets and looking to come up with, I guess, a comprehensive master plan, if you like, for how that environment can best service the community and the assets that the council, cultural assets that sit within that space. They've proposed, I guess, a phased approach, and we're at the very beginning of that journey, being the site investigation. We've done an element of, I suppose, design work upfront, working in partnership with the AIS team. And they've come up with, I suppose, an initial response to that public realm and with the view being that we test that design through some community engagement, that we're looking, originally, as we've outlined in the report, we were hoping to start that in November. All going well, we'll start that in December now.
Okay, thank you. Green and connected. I was going to ask for an update on the lighter quicker. Ah, cheaper.
I can have a go at that one, too.
What is that about?
So we, so the, obviously, the premise of the project began through TMR. And TMR had a lot of quicker, cheaper funding programme through which they had a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars allocated for Ipswich. And we've identified East Street being a TMR road as a really good opportunity to sort of investigate, I suppose, design opportunities to bring in potentially some shade through that space. A preliminary design, basically, which has a plan to box either side of a footpath and a sort of canopy over the top for a vine to grow over the top of, was designed. I think that was shared with councillors. We've actually just had some feedback from our engineers saying, East Street being a combined pedestrian and cycle path, they need the design of the actual plan to box to be a bit higher so that people on bikes won't be obstructed. So we just, and TMRs also provide that feedback, too. So we are just looking to amend the design for that at the moment, and then we'll come back with an updated option for that.
Okay, well, that's good news because obviously we were aware that East Street is a very busy state-controlled road. So we were worried about the project we put forward and whether or not it would meet the criteria around safety. So the dialogue is happening, that's good.
Yeah.
And the fourth item in the paper was a home, and specifically around the shop top living. Can you give us up an update on the viability of shop top living within our CBD?
Yeah, it's, I think, we've learned quite a bit from the process. You know, there was wonderful engagement from many of those business owners, or sorry, property owners, along particularly the top of town stretch. Where we probably landed was three key projects, if you like, potentially. The flower mill, the optometrist and the Steve Mallett's shop. So we're working with those in each. Because of the nature of the properties along there being either heritage or, you know, each property is unique along that stretch, each will sort of need a unique response. So Flower Mill, they're well progressed in their design, so I think there's probably more of a concierge service that we can provide to support them. They may look for some financial incentives potentially. The other two options will probably need a little bit more support from council, but we're looking at there being, excuse me for one second. We're looking at, we had some designs done in partnership with the University of Canberra students. That was a partnership that came around and came about through our creative industries connections. And then from there, we determined that one of the spaces didn't offer the right lighting conditions for residential developments. There wasn't enough windows. And so they're looking at a cafe for that space. And the other one, I think, is more available, viable, which is the Steve Mallett property. So we'll continue to work with him.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions? No?
All right, thank you.
So the recommendation is that the report concerning the Ipswich Central revitalisation progress since June twenty twenty-three be received in the contents noted. Could I have a move on, please? Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and a second. I thank you, councillor Kunselman. I'll now open up for discussion. Any discussion? No?
I was going to add to that, if I may, Chair, is obviously look at the progress indicators, though they're quite impressive, the number of new businesses opened up. But I also want to commend the Ipswich Central partnerships, which is a, you know, community group that are doing tremendous work, you know, around Ipswich Central as well. And, you know, being very community-minded and really proud of our CBD as well.
Yeah, absolutely. That Ipswich Central partnership group are an outstanding group of residents who do a great job in connecting and corralling residents and channeling that energy into producing some really great projects. I just wanted to point out, you know, under number two, Alive, within the report, the developing the cultural heart can't be underestimated or understated the importance of that as we revitalise our CBD. With all the work we've been doing on the new Ipswich Plan, the new Ipswich planning scheme, you know, it is absolutely identified. When we talk about hierarchies and maintaining our position as a CBD, we absolutely need to be leveraging off our existing cultural assets. So, yeah, an important piece of work, and I'm delighted by the work that council officers have been putting into, you know, Civic Centre, Art Gallery, Darcy Doyle Place, and developing plans and ideas around that.
And I think, too, because that's happening, we're seeing, I think you look at item six on page seventeen, neighbourhood, MDHD, Switch City. I mean, that wouldn't have happened without this revitalisation. A wonderful social enterprise in our community would not have happened if it wasn't for the revitalisation of our CBD here. So it's great to see such an amazing organisation like that, and others which have nothing to do with council directly. That wouldn't have happened. That social enterprise would not have happened if it wasn't for the CBD redevelopment.
Yeah, absolutely. Top of Nicholas Street is a wonderful mix of, you know, eclectic businesses, not only food, but other services on offer. Encourage everyone to visit Nicholas Street, including the top of Nicholas Street there. If there's nothing further, we'll put that to the vote. All those in favour? Noting that's unanimous and carried. Moving on to item three, which is the Ipswich Central activation report for August to October. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer about that? No? Okay, could I have a mover? The recommendation, sorry, is that the report summarising recent activations and events in Ipswich Central be received in the contents noted. Could I have a mover, please? Thank you, councillor Kunselman, and a second. I thank you, Deputy Mayor. Open that up for discussion.
I thought it was just a really good factual report on things happening. I do, like, with looking at page thirty-one of forty-eight, just, this is an activation report by looking at what's bringing people here. So obviously, the school holiday programmes are huge, as well as, you know, the handmade market expo, tunes on tour with the Spooktacular and things like that.
Halloween.
Halloween, as well as the library and so on. I find it interesting, because, you know, there's one thing we're looking at, there's the Matildas there, and we had about eight hundred people. It's one thing that we grapple with, I guess, each time there's a big sporting event. We look at, do we host it here or not? And I guess for, for, oh, I can only speak for myself, always looking at, well, the weather. I mean, if it's raining, people aren't going to come. But the other thing is, too, we don't want to take away business. So if local clubs like CSI or Brothers or Jets or someone else is playing that, or Orion Hotel, if they're playing, I don't want to take business away from them either. So I just think people, we're sort of in that process of what would activate that or not. So I think we're just sort of, we're playing it by ear at the moment.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, it's striking the right balance for residents and local businesses, as well as the expectations of ratepayers. It is a civic space down there, and they do expect certain activation. But, yeah, striking that.
Yeah, and if we don't get a number of people, obviously, we'll put on some food trucks and stuff, because that's what people's expectation is. They go there and they, and if the businesses there don't open, and that's up to them, if we get a food truck, they'll expect certain numbers as well if that's not happening. Yeah, so we've got to get that balance right, I think.
Yeah, absolutely. And the Matildas game was a great example of where council stood that up on very short notice. I'd like to commence, commend the officers in putting that together. I attended the evening and it went really well. And obviously, we had a local sporting group there who were able to raise money through doing the sausage sizzle. So that's great community activation in what was designed and meant to be a civic space, something we'd been lacking for a very long time. Okay, if there's nothing further on that one, we'll put the matter to the vote. All those in favour? Noting that's unanimous and carried. Moving on to item four, which is the Nicholas Street precinct, November twenty twenty-three retail sub-project steering committee report. Could I call the relevant council officer to come forward, please?
Thank you, Mr Hepburn. Thank you for the report. Firstly, in relation to indie school, it's great to see that they've executed the lease there and there across levels one and two at one four three Brisbane Street. Approximately how many students and staff do they bring to the precinct?
We're just trying to gauge those figures at the moment, but currently they're operating about twelve staff and, I think, thirty-plus students. And this will enable them to at least double that offering as they move from essentially being indie school also into an indie college. So it starts to really stretch the age groups they're about, they're able to integrate with.
Yeah, okay, great. Specifically around the Commonwealth Hotels sewer works that will take place at Union Street, have we engaged? Do we expect that that may impact local businesses or residents living in our CBD?
Hopefully not. Those works are already ongoing. If you were out there now, you could see that there's some very heavy hoarding that comes down during the day to protect the work that's happening underground. Most of the work happens throughout the night, and we've timed it so it works with the events and activations team so that we don't essentially get in the way of Christmas, which is quite important, obviously, for all of us.
Great.
It was a time slot given to us by Urban Utilities, which sometimes are quite hard to manipulate, unfortunately.
And the Sustainable Futures, what, who are they?
Sustainable Futures is an industry lobby group who set up to essentially promote suburban futures throughout Queensland in particular. They are national but focused predominantly on Queensland. There's a lot of very learned colleagues of ours who take part in trying to guide policy for government and essentially celebrate, you know, new development around precincts and the way we live into the future.
So there was a presentation by yourself, and I think the mayor attended as well. Did we receive any feedback on our urban renewal, our precinct, that is Nicholas Street?
Yeah, I think we got a lot of fantastic feedback. I think we were really delighted with how it went. We were on the slot just before lunch, which enabled us to really have a captive audience. It was a great story to tell. It's an incredible case study that we here have lived through over the last four years. And it's one that, whether it's private business or local government or regional governments, and they're all interested in the revitalisation of Ipswich and how we've come from where we were to certainly where we are today and where we may well be in, certainly in the future.
Okay. And just finally from me, I see in the construction update that the escalators will be moved in position prior to Christmas. And importantly, the location of the escalators is very different to what it used to be. And that was about maximising the amount of lettable space within venues, is my understanding. Are you able to speak to the reasons behind moving the escalator and what that means for not just the precinct, but the interaction with downtown and top of town?
Yes, yeah, of course. Before all of us, when council was in administration, the original DA was put in place, and it saw to invigorate Brisbane Street and the linkages through to Darcy Doyle, down to Bell Street and East Street, as well as also invigorate the link from Thousand Space Car Park in Nicholas Street, all the way up again through Nicholas Street back into Darcy Doyle. That also enabled more lettable space to become available within the venue building. And that was important through some of the KPMG findings, that we needed to create as much income as possible to offset the cost of this development and also to create a space that was lettable to the market. The current space, if you recall, with Terry White on its former location, with like a very mini mall down there, really wasn't fit for purpose for the modern-day retail world. So the decision was made in the design content then. More recently, we have, we, in partnership with Hoyts, have relocated the escalators, probably about twenty metres, off the top of my head. So they've moved from the lower end of the building further up towards the Rusinale and towards Darcy Doyle. There's two reasons for that. One, again, value. We wanted to pull as many people from the car park up through the precinct and past our shop fronts. But unselfishly, we also wanted to pull as many of those people up from the car park, past all of the other third-party landlord shop fronts. So it gives everyone another opportunity to make a sale, and it really made the Hoyts Cinema work as a real anchor driver for the footfall from the car park. In doing that, also enabled us to really start to play with the facade and create a far more inviting space for people to come.
And finally, it wasn't going to be part of my questions for you, but we can't help but notice the rain. The rain can not be our friend when we're, you know, we've got a building site. Do we expect any delays? How are we tracking timewise?
Timewise, we're doing okay. Hopefully, the rain won't cause too many problems as the glass ceiling, glass roof that completes the wind and weather proofing of the venue building goes on in the next couple of weeks. What may cause us some delays is essentially the heat and the temperature that comes through. And we did have site closed once or twice over the last two weeks due to heat. But these are all currently being worked within the programme and aren't foreseen to be any problems.
Okay. Any other questions?
May I ask, Mr Hepburn? Obviously, we had a special council meeting to look at two food and beverage offerings and as well as a service provider. How are those lease negotiations going?
They're going well. I will say that these reports were always out of date at the time of writing. And so when we look at the table from the change from twenty-seventh of October, lease documents being prepared is actually three. So we have two food and beverage offerings which are out there with the opposing party's lawyers. And we have one office lease deal which sits above eats, if you recall. So those three are out there. We expect the office deal to close this side of Christmas. The food ones unsure, as they're primarily focused on trading and earning as much money as they can on the lead into Christmas. But I can say positively that our lawyers are pretty close on the documents and, you know, hopefully we'll be comfortable those close soon. And as we work our way down to leases executed over the last essentially two months, we've closed out three, excuse me, three new deals within one four three Brisbane Street, which relates to Indie School, Red Cross and the V Group. three new, um, deals within one four three Brisbane Street, which relates to, um, Indie School, Red Cross and, and the V Group.
Thank you very much, Stephen. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr Hepburn.
Uh, Chair, if I may?
Oh, I'm so sorry, deputy mayor, waiting patiently as usual.
Um, you've, uh, quite rightly, uh, covered the, uh, the matter, which is pretty obvious out the window, the, uh, the weather. But, uh, can I just gain a bit more clarity as to, uh, it's difficult to forecast, uh, long range forecast weather, but, uh, uh, with the, the, the roof structures, uh, now on, um, both sites, um, work would, if there is seasonable, uh, storm weather throughout the summer, um, that those works will be able to continue?
Certainly at the moment with venue, um, it's Hutchinson Builders are, uh, they're a national builder. They're tier one, they are used to working in Queensland weather. Um, so they'll work within our programme and the Hoyts programme and, and theirs to, to get through that, I'm sure. Uh, Commonwealth Hotel currently doesn't have a roof on the new build part of the rear. So, um, you know, we have looked at that and thought we must keep an eye on that. But at the moment, it hasn't proved too problematic with, with weather. It's just mainly been heat that's closed most sites around Queensland, actually.
Yeah, yeah, which is very important, uh, on, um, environmentally on work sites. Um, I know myself, you have to be very mindful of, of heat stress. Um, so at the, the continuation of, of structure moving, um, up and out at the rear of the Commonwealth, that you, you think we'll be able to progress to timeline?
I think so. Uh, the Commonwealth Hotel, um, is a smaller but slightly more technical scheme than, than venue. Um, and Hutchy's is just working the way through that at the moment. We're, um, we're also still really a little bit beholden to the tenant, which is us hotels, and they need to finalise their fit out contractor selection, uh, which we're hoping happens this side of Christmas, but, um, but unsure on that at the moment.
Yes.
And to remind all, they have a window of handover to them fit out that fits within their agreement for lease, which they're currently still within. But of course, we'd all like them to hurry up and, and complete what they need to do so we can get a pub open for everyone.
Yes, I, I, I see, uh, in commentary, particularly on our council's, um, social media channel, that, uh, there's, uh, clearly some anticipation. When is that pub going to be open? Um, discussions, uh, which is very encouraging. It, uh, it appears that, um, our residents are, are very keen, um, to be able to revisit a, a favourite watering hole. Um, and, uh, Mr Hepburn, my final, um, question would be, uh, the recent appointment of a retail leasing agent, uh, together with the new retail leasing campaign. Um, could I ask you just to, um, expand on that a little bit?
So what was the question, councillor?
With regards to the recent appointment of a retail leasing agent and, uh, the new retail leasing campaign, um, you're, um, very confident that, that will have us, uh, the ability to, to gain tenants for the venue in particular as soon as the paint is dry.
Yeah, we've had, um, we've reached out to over four hundred brands in the last probably, what, three to five months that colleagues have been on board. Um, and there's been a clear focus on securing mini majors. So what does that mean? We've been very much focused on landing a big leisure offer to go in the four and a half thousand square metres that sits below the, the Hoyts Cinema. Um, we've got a fair idea who, who we hope that will be and there's, there's a few players in the market at the moment that are starting to size up against each other, which is good news. Um, and it's off the back of that that we'll start to see all of the other tenancies drop. Um, last month, obviously, saw the approval of two new food tenancies. Um, and we're hoping that as we move into the new year, we'll be able to bring forward a, a good few more in that space. Um, we're, we're very much focused on, on bringing, looking at burgers, Italian, um, any sort of sandwich style offer and, and seeing how we can really continue to diversify the, the food on offer within the precinct.
Mm-hmm. Because it is the, uh, the, the prospect of those, um, other, uh, tenants there that, that will definitely en- ensure that the venue is a outstanding success. Um, and that it is not just a cinema. Um, it is a venue for, um.
It is venue.
It is a venue, um, with all those other businesses and, and offerings there to, uh, to attract people for, um, entertainment and, uh, and all, all the rest that goes with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so the recommendation is that the November twenty twenty three Retail Sub Project Steering Committee Report be received in the contents noted. Could I have a mover please? Thank you Deputy Mayor, in a second. I thank you councillor Kunselman. Open up for discussion.
May I share? I just want to highlight to people that, um, we've now opened up a new Shape Your Ipswich page on the Nicholas Street Precinct, you know, emerging city heart. Um, whilst we've had, we always obviously ha- are very open with our um, documents at committee, they can be a bit hard to search for sometimes if you're not used to it. And also the Transments Integrity Hub has always, has had the full financials there for the last three and a bit years. But the Shape Your Ipswich page is to, I guess, to give some of the, the facts and, um, you know, questions that people ask, such as why are we not building high-rise residential where venue is? And obviously, we've, we've given that advice there and, and with the fact there's no car parking and there's no market, um, interest. But it's a one-stop shop for, um, for information, um, the layout of what venue will look like. It's not just Hoyts. There's a whole heap of other entertainment options, um, that will be there as well. So I encourage anyone who's really interested to, to go to that Shape Your Ipswich page to have a look. And, um, if residents would like to have any other questions added to the frequently asked questions, please just email us and let us know and we'll add them to it.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. It's certainly a very comprehensive, um, list of questions and, and answers and, and background information. Um, and, you know, as, as chair, I, I do find it frustrating that, um, the, the focus is, is always um, on one offering out of venue. Um, but, but venue, um, will be the place to be. And Ipswich has been begging for a very long time for an entertainment precinct, uh, with cinemas and, and lots of other fun things for young people to do. We know from the work we've done internally at council and the external reports we've received that, um, a lot of money from residents is being spent outside of our L G A. People are going, uh, to Brisbane and beyond for, for alternative offerings. They, they do want a choice. So I'm delighted to, um, yeah, give them opportunities to stay here and, and spend here and support local businesses. Um, you know, top of town businesses as well as downtown, um, are so supportive and delighted to see the progress so far. Um, Compass Tattoo, you know, they're not one of our tenants, they're part of, you know, Top of Nicholas Street there. And to see their posts on their Facebook group, um, delighted to see the cinemas opening, so, and what it means for them um, is really heartening. So, bring it on.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I get asked by residents. They're just very excited. Um, it's, it's when will it open? And that's the, the positive vibe that I get throughout the entire city. Um, I think the dismissed councils are the only ones I, you know, I, I guess, not the, not the ones in council now, but I, I, just from the residents, they just want to see their C B D come back to life. They're enjoying what they're seeing and what's coming in. So it's, it's really quite exciting. But, look, I thought it was very interesting to, to show people that, um, that, I guess, the process that's been underway in the C B D since two thousand and nine. And to, to give them the facts rather than just rumours.
Yeah, absolutely. It's disingenuous, um, for, for some to, you know, allege, um, a seventy three million dollar cinema. Get the facts. It's all there on Shape Your Ipswich about, um, what council is doing to revitalise our C B D. And, um, direct residents as well, um, to have a look at all the draft documents, um, planning, our new planning scheme documents. It is there in black and white, what we need to be doing, why it is critical. We're at a very important place in time where council need to be taking these steps, um, to, to continue the relevance and importance of, of Ipswich Central. Um, to sit on our hands and, and do nothing, um, would, um, um, be catastrophic, in my view, in my personal view.
And, and I think too, you know, we, we now have a reputation, we've, we've received two national awards for our uh, approach to openness and transparency in this council. So I think it, it leans into, into that. And I guess, to use one of my favourite quotes from Shakespeare, uh, tell the truth and shame the devil. So we put the truth out there and let people, um, make up their own mind.
Yeah, I mean, the, the governance in place, absolutely, um, is, um, extensive, including, um, quarterly reporting to the deputy premier on what we're doing here. So residents can be assured that we are being transparent and reporting to the right people on, on what we're doing and that we've got the right professional advisers on board, um, advising us every step of the way.
Yes, Chair, that's absolutely correct. If I may, um, add to the conversation that the, uh, the redevelopment of Ipswich Central, um, which includes, um, Nicholas Street i- is not a six-month, twelve-month, she'd be whack it up and she'd be right. It's a, a long-term, uh, plan and, uh, I'm, uh, very proud uh, to be part of a council who has stayed the course on, um, what is a long-term project that will deliver, um, outstanding benefits, uh, to the city.
Yeah, one point two billion. Okay. Anything further? I will put that to the vote. All those in favour, looking around the room, it's unanimous and carried. Uh, we have no notices of motion, nil matters arising. Um, so I think that brings us, um, to the end of this committee and, and, and the end of committees for today. Closing at three twenty six. Thank you.